Okay, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, January 19th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. It is seven, seven o'clock and I need to read into the record in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the January 19th public meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting and the meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. So having said that, other than Lake Cam, is anyone else recording this meeting? So just speak up. Okay. Well, let's jump right into our first hearing. Bedford Holdings, 33 Bedford Street. Bear with me as I scroll down. Scroll a little too far. Okay, zoning board of appeals acting in accordance with mass general laws 40A as amended will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19th, seven o'clock to hear the petition of Bedford Holdings. Special permit under 6.6, 3.4, and 7.4 is requested to replace an existing damaged sign. Present sign was issued a special permit from the Lakeville zoning board of appeals in 2016. The proposed sign will be approximately 59.7 square feet. Top of the sign will be approximately 17 feet, three inches above grade as provided by the bylaws. The property site is 33 Bedford Street and is located in a business zone. And I'm going to skip the coronavirus section since I already read it into the record. And I believe according to the information I have in front of me, Ms. Jamie, you're going to be presenting for the petitioner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I think you may need to speak up a little. I was barely able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay. So why don't you let us know what you guys are looking for or trying to do here? And then I'll read some other information into the record. And if you need to share a screen at any point, feel free.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to start off by sharing the screen and we'll go over the site plan. All right, Mr. Chair and board members. Again, my name is Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record here on behalf of the owners of 33 Bedford Street in Lakeville. As the chairman had stated, several months back, the sign was hit and damaged. The base and the pole structure received damage to it. The, the mobile sign that was up top was actually broken as well, from what I'm told. I do have some pictures of it broken and not being located on the metal apparatus sign structure. Anyways, they brought in the sign company to try to do the repair and the sign company told them that because of the, the damage to the pole that a new pole and structure would be required. And so client contacted myself and what we did was we contacted Mobil who has the, the rights to the gas there. They, they have that as one of their distribution stations and they provided us with, with their small, what they call their smallest sign. And so that's part of our application now is to replace essentially in the same place with this new sign meeting the 10 foot setback, being completely on site, but going over the square footage allotment as allowed by right under the bylaw. If you may, I'd like to also share a picture of the, the sign itself. Let's see. So this is the rendering from Mobil for the sign itself. The sign would say something, it would have the Mobil and the synergy technology. It has the, the regular price, the diesel price. And then in, in our case, I believe that they would like for it to say beer and wine because they do have a liquor license inside. And I'm not sure if this bottom one is going to say lottery or if it's going to say convenience store because there's also a convenience store there as well. And so, Mr. Chair, I believe that is the soup and nuts of my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions or go into further detail if you'd like.
I'll, I'll open it up to the board in a second. The only question I have, Jamie, is it appears the only, the only digital aspect of the sign is the changing of the, the price of the gas.
Correct, yeah.
I assume it's going to be no more than on a daily basis. So.
Yeah, I, I, hopefully it's, it's not for even longer than that. But, you know, fuel prices change and, and they don't do the, the stickers or the, the plastic clear numbers up on the signs anymore. So this is the new standard.
Okay. Before I open up to the board, let me just read into the record here. We do have a letter from the conservation commission memo, I should say dated January 13th. They had, this was presented at a hearing, or I should say no hearing is scheduled for this one. It's, it's been presented to them because there are no wetland issues with the project. So looks like you're in the clear with Concom and I believe the planning board memo dated January 19th, planning board advised that at their Thursday, January 14th hearing, meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition, the hearing from the board of appeals, the board recommended the application not be approved unless the size of the sign is reduced and it complies with the bylaw. So the planning board is not in favor. And the board of health, basically, they actually have an email, a couple of emails, but we did ask them if they had any opinions or thoughts on any of the petitions before us. And as far as it relates to this one, they do not have any, they do not have any issues, comments. So having said that, Jamie, can you unshare the screen just so I can see who's, looks like they want to? At this point, I'll ask my board members if anyone has any, any comments or questions.
Mr. Chair, this is Nora.
Nora. Yeah, go ahead, Nora.
Jamie, what's the size of the current sign? I went by there about an hour, hour and a half ago and took a couple of pictures of the Mobil sign and the sign of the auto repair place next door.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't have, I don't have an exact measurement on that sign in place. The, the two times that I was out to look at it, the sign for the Mobil had not been replaced as of yet. I do know that it's up now, but the last time I was out there, the Mobil replacements were not back. In fact, I was told that they were having a hard time getting a Mobil replacement for that sign. So I do apologize, Nora.
No, that's, that's okay. The, the current sign does have two digital locations to give the current gallon pricing, I'm assuming for regular and, and premium. And then down below it, it appears there's a big cardboard or paper signing and I can't read what it says because I was in my car and there's a bush in the way.
Yeah, I actually have a picture of it. This was, this was when I was out taking my measurements for the sign. Wrong direction. So that was with the top broken and then the beer and wine section of the sign as well.
So they've, they've replaced both sides with the digital and on the right side, depending on how you're looking at that. I think you're, yeah, you're coming from the same direction I did. It has the Mobil. So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's my opinion that there's not a need to go beyond the current sign size and, and allow a, a larger size than what the bylaws currently permit. That's my opinion for whatever it's worth.
This, so this structure, Nora, just so you know, it's not just about the up top. The biggest component from what the, the owner and contractor have told me is down here where the, the vehicle actually hit the, the structure is what's causing the entire structure to have to be taken down and a new one. To create a sign like this would be a custom sign. The, the Mobil sign that we had in front of you is, is a relatively standard Mobil sign that they have at the majority of the Mobil stations. It's also very, it's, it's smaller, but comparable to the one that was approved a few years back by the zoning board at Shell. Let me see. With the seasons and the Mary Lou's right next to my office. So this sign's actually bigger than the one that we're looking for.
Interesting.
Yep. I mean, this doesn't.
So this sign that we're looking at right now is, is, covers significantly, or maybe not significantly, but a larger area than what you're proposing, correct?
Yeah, yeah. This, this sign, we estimated to be somewhere around 65 square feet, which is significantly larger than what we're proposing. It's also taller. So yes.
Jamie, go back to the other one if you don't mind for a second.
Um.
So it appears, well, yeah, yeah. So it, so it looks like what they're trying to do is just take up more space, not necessarily go, go, maybe they are going to be a little higher, but from a height standpoint, they're just trying to not have strictly a pole with a sign at the top, at the top. They're looking to get a little more coverage for beer and wine or lottery or whatever the case may be, more in line with what's going on over at Shell.
Yeah, yeah. I think that they're trying to, to be able to keep up with what everybody's doing. And again, this is the smaller of their sign. The first one that they actually presented, the first thing I did, understanding how Lakeville works, is I pushed back and asked for a smaller sign. And this, this was the smaller sign.
So Jamie, are they planning on pulling out that shrubbery that's there? Because that would block a great portion of the sign.
You know what, Nora? That's a great thing that I guess I skimmed over and I do apologize for that. Actually, we're proposing to re-vegetate the entire island in here. So, and let me zoom in. I apologize. I'm on my laptop tonight. My desktop was giving me fits with Zoom. So right in here now, you can see there's kind of a, an evergreen that's kind of overgrown. And then there's a couple of shrubs and there's some existing lights that shine up at the sign and some, some ground coverage that's in here. Our proposal is actually going to be to get rid of, get rid of that stuff. Come in and really spruce the island up. New shrubbery, nice, nice low growth. So, so the sign is, you're able to see the sign, but you're actually seeing nice, nice landscaping at the base of the sign and, and hopefully to enhance the vegetative, the vegetative ground cover as well in that area. So you're right, Nora. This, this is more than just one thing.
All right. That's all I had.
Jamie, can you unshare just so we can keep an eye on who's talking, please? Thanks. I think, Chris, did you have, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Good evening. So Jamie, I kind of go along with Nora. I think the overall size of this is a little too large. If you're taking down that U that's in front and then you're going to put up more bushes, is that going to increase or decrease the sightline? And then what's on the right to the bottom of the new sign, Jamie? Is that going to, you know, is that impeding traffic pulling in and out of there?
No, it won't. We're going to use low growth, but you got to remember that the, the sign is 10 feet from the edge of the closest part of the sign would be 10 feet off of the property line. The right of ways even further. So cars will have plenty of sight visibility.
All right. So yeah, I'm all about sidelines. That's a very busy road. They zip by there at 50 miles an hour plus. So I think a sideline is important. I don't have too many problems with the sign. I think maybe if they took that bottom wine and then maybe beer, wine, and lottery, that would be my suggestion.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's something we can definitely consider if that's what the board's looking for.
Uh, let's see. Jeff, do you have any comments?
No, I just, I noticed it was a little bit bigger than the original one, but I really don't have a problem with it. Shell's a lot bigger.
Chris Sheedy?
I don't know if it was addressed already, but I was just curious what the original sign square footage was.
Yeah. And I do apologize, Chris. I, when I went there, the sign was just the broken apparatus that, that we had. I didn't know how the sign fit in relation to it, if it actually kind of wrapped it. It was just pieces on the ground. So I do apologize.
Is there any information on that? What, with the, like the original sign?
It's old. It's old. Yeah, it's old. I believe it would have been just through the building department. I've been working for this client for at least a decade and I know I have not done anything with the sign for him.
Yeah. I mean, I think it obviously goes without saying. I mean, it is a bigger sign. It sounds like the, they're looking for a little more space to, to advertise and promote whatever's going on inside the, the building there. And they're probably just trying to keep up with what we've already permitted for, for Shell, which was actually larger. So, you know, I, Jerry?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Jamie, do you have documentation or anything, communication from Mobil about that being the smallest sign available?
Documentation? No.
Any correspondence suggesting that that's the smallest available sign?
It was a phone call. What happened was when we were on site and they were, and the owner of the station was showing me the, the sign and the damage and explaining what he was looking for. We called the sign people from Mobil and, and what they did was they emailed me over a larger sign. And before I left the site, I said, you know, I really think the square footage here is going to be tough. Let's, let's get a smaller sign. Do you have one? And they balked at it, but they ended up sending me a smaller sign and that's what we have.
So, okay. Second question to that, is it necessary to have those, you know, multiple line items beyond just the fuel pricing, right? Which is obviously necessary, but the beer and wine, the lottery, I mean, is that absolutely necessary at this point?
I, I think.
I know you can't speak from the owner's perspective, but.
Well, no, I, I think I can. I've talked to him about it because I, I, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to be able to have some, some ability. He was hoping for both. At a bare minimum, we need one because they do have a convenience store inside. I'm not sure if it would say beer and wine and lottery or the convenience store's name or beer and wine. He, he kind of felt that because the Shell station was given a larger sign with additional, a lot, they, they have multiple signs on theirs that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't really receive much of a problem. But I, I think we could, we could forego having one of those panels. And I think my client would be amenable to that.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I know, Jamie, it might be hard for you to surmise, but based on the old sign, is the overall height and overall width, I guess the maximum height and width any different? Because it looks like the height may be the same and the width might be the same, but just the usable space might be just a little bit more.
Yeah. I mean, Chris, that's a good question, too. I think, I think what's happening is this sign is, is off to one side. So the pole, instead of it being a center mounted sign, it's, it's a, a side mounted sign and it, and it runs taller as far as in perspective. I don't think the overall height is going to be much different. This sign's not really that tall. It's not as tall as the Shell sign, which is like 20, somewhere around 21, 22 feet above grade. I think we're at 17, if, if we can take a look because my memory's not always the best.
17, 3.
17, yeah. So, so I, I would estimate that we're probably in the same range within a foot or two of what's there now, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any, Jamie, do you have anything additional to add at this point?
I, I don't think so. I mean, you know, it's, it's, I do understand the size concern. Believe me, I, as, as I get to know this board more, I truly try to take their recommendations, you know, to heart and, and when I'm proceeding forward, advise my clients so that we can minimize meetings and, and just be able to move on with the process. And that's why I did talk to them about the sign with the one panel. But again, I do want the board to just be cognizant that one was approved for a competitor, you know, within the past few years, very close. And so we, we just want to be treated in the same light as they were.
We can appreciate that comment. Do we have any questions or anyone else on the Zoom meeting have any comments from the public? Anybody on Facebook?
No questions on Facebook.
Okay, thanks. Chris, did you have another question?
Yeah. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments and then I had a question. It looks like the sign bylaw says we were allowed about 32 square feet for the sign. So I think that's what the original sign was. This is going for almost twice that at 59. I don't have so much of a problem with it. I think the bottom panel should go though. So if you're looking at one, one by five, is that, is that my, what do you got about five or six square feet, Jamie, down at the bottom?
Yeah. And I can do the math relatively quickly on that. I'm just gonna pop it up.
I could make, I could make a suggestion, you know, I can make a, a motion minus that bottom panel if you give me the square footage not to exceed. If the board's so comfortable with that.
I, I'll, I'll comment. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. My, my hesitation is this, this board not as compromised now, but, or as composed now, but, you know, we did issue the permit, the special permit. And I know we don't do precedent for the, the Shell gas station sign. So I'm, I'm almost inclined to say as long as you're, you're, you're no larger than that sign, I, I, I balked it, you know, granting relief to a certain degree for one property owner and, and not doing the same for, for another. So I, that's, that's my only comment in regards to that. I can appreciate where everyone's coming from. I mean, do you necessarily need it? No. But again, we don't set precedent, not to be repetitive, but I, I do think this, to some degree, we probably should, should treat everyone as similarly as we can. So I'll, at that point, I'll see if my board has any other comments or if someone wants to make a, a motion.
Mr. Chair, it's Nora. I, I would agree with your comment. I was not aware that the other sign was as large as it was and had been approved, not by this, by a previous board. And I think in fairness that, to the branding and everything, we, and I think Jamie's done a great job in keeping the size smaller and in good taste. My only concern when we do this is will the guy next door want to increase the size of his sign?
Well, that's the problem, Nora. So if we grant this, then the 10,000 other people behind them, and then we're looking like Vegas going up and down 18. So.
Right. And we just refused.
To stay within them. So the composition of the board was different and they allowed variances before, like they were handing out free candy. You know, that's not the composition of this board now. So I think we stick with the bylaw. We are going to grant them a variance, but not to the degree, degree that they want. So I, I think we should stick within the general feeling of the bylaw. The intent is to keep them smaller. That's in my position.
I'll make a comment real quick. I agree. But, Mr. Chairman, I disagree with the kind of holding steady to the precedents set in the past. I mean, if you continue to make us uphold those precedents, I mean, that, that's a very slippery road, I think, going forward, right? Just my comment.
No, I, I, I agree. Like I said, we do not set precedent. We can, you know, this, this board can make whatever decision or determination they want. I just, I, I, again, my personal feeling is that this, this, these are duplicate businesses. You know, they're both gas stations. They both have convenience stores. And I guess I'm putting myself in, in that property owner's shoes.
Could we expect the Dollar Store to come back and ask for a larger sign at this point?
Can I make a comment?
Right. It's a fair comment, but who has a comment?
Chris Sheedy, John?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. As far as the competitive nature of it, I, I'm not really seeing, I'm, I'm not seeing that argument. It's, it's two gas stations on opposite ends of town and it's, it'd be a good argument if, if there was a gas station going up where CVS is, like directly across the street. Can definitely see that argument, but I don't know. It, it seems like it's a slippery slope and I think we have to be, I think we have to adhere to the bylaw a little stricter. It's a 75% increase, increase to what the bylaw allows. And the signage below the necessary advertising, Mobil, gas pricing, as you go down the list, it becomes more of a wish list of what you want to, what message you want to convey as to what kind of business they're doing inside. And the, the bylaw says it's 32 square feet. And there's been other people in town denied. So you can almost make an argument that that's also a precedent. And I think if we adhere or honor the bylaws more, I, I think we, I, I think we're in a better position instead of just being generous, I guess might be the word. I'm in favor of a, of a 75% increase over what's allowed.
Okay, Jeff, Jeff, were you going to comment?
Yeah. Did Jamie come up with a, what square footage minus the bottom panel?
I did. It's about 7.9 square.
What does it give us? 52?
59.7 subtract 51.82. So yeah, 52 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion at this point?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'll make that motion that we accept the variance, but we restrict them to the, Jamie, help me out 51.82 feet?
If you called it 51.83, because the decimal goes three figures.
Okay. I'd make a motion to accept that sign with the size restrictions of Mr. Bissonette's 51.83.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the special permit not to go over the 51.83 square feet. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
I'm, I'm, I think Jeff, I think Jeff beat you just a little bit there, Nora.
That's fine.
So we can't have you second everything, Nora. We got to let everyone else get out of the fun here. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, let's do the roll call vote. So let me make sure I have this correct here. All right. So the folks voting on this are going to be myself, Jeff, Chris, Nora, and Jerry, the regular members. So yay or nay? Jeff?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yes.
Nora?
Yay.
Jerry?
Nay.
Nora, were you yay or nay?
Yay. Yes.
I probably should have asked this ahead of time, but before I make the final vote here. Jamie, are you, did you want to, are you okay with us recommending that? I mean, I always ask.
I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm in favor as well. So four in favor and Jerry, you were no, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So the motion carries and I think you know the deal, Jamie, but I'm going to ask Kathy to let you know the process anyways for the record.
All right. The ZBA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and it is submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20 day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it. You take the decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded and take the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay. Let me just get to our second hearing. Get through all of Jamie's paperwork here. I apologize. I have all the paperwork. I just don't have the notice in front of me. I have all the paperwork. I just don't have the notice in front of me. All right, well, I don't have the actual notice, but I do have the petition paperwork application in front of me, so I can work off of that one. I guess I can't work off of that one. Um, Kathy, I'm looking through my information here. I have all the paperwork. I just don't have the notice in front of, in front of me. Yeah.
Do you want me to read it? I can't.
I mean, unless some, does someone else have the notice in front of them? I know the packet I have had the information, but it didn't have the notice.
Why don't you go? Petition for, uh, petition for a hearing, that's it.
Yeah, yeah, the notice isn't, isn't there. Do you want to just read it? Yeah, we have, we have all the information. We just don't literally have the, the public notice that was posted.
Sure, the zoning board of appeals petition for a hearing from Louis Vermette, Four Ash Street, Lakeville. Uh, and that's the, the location of the property is Five Ash Street. He's asking the board members to lift the deed restriction of seasonal home to year-round home per property changes and upgrades.
Correct. Do you have, do we have the, um, that's, yeah, that's what I have too. Do we, do we, do you actually have the, uh, the public posting, Kathy?
I do.
Can you just read that in for the record? Did Chris, uh, you read everything correctly? Don't get, take me wrong, but.
I know, I get it, I get it.
Well, I think we, you know, go ahead.
The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter forty-eight as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM to hear the petition of Louis Vermette. The request is to modify decision zero seven dash ten filed with the town clerk on November first two thousand and seven and remove a seasonal deed restriction. A determination will be made if a special permit under seven point four will also be required as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is Five Ash Street and is owned by Louis Vermette slash L and A Realty Trust.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Vermette, you're gonna present. Let me just read one thing into the record first, if you don't mind. Um, the Conservation Commission in their January thirteenth memo, um, had noted that there is no hearing scheduled. Uh, demolition of the existing, existing structure inside the one hundred-foot buffer zone will require a request for determination of applicability. New construction and septic system upgrade may, uh, require a notice of intent. Uh, also, the uh, Board of Health had no issue with removing the seasonal deed restriction based on a, um, email from the, um, Board of Health agent and the Planning Board uh, at their January fourteenth meeting in a memo dated January fifteenth, uh, reviewed the above referenced petition for a hearing from the Board of Appeals, and the board has no comments regarding this petition, so Mr. Vermette, you're up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So basically, what I, I had was a seasonal home to start with. I had bought the property behind it that had a two-bedroom dwelling, and per the approval of the, the new septic design that we put in years ago, um, part of it was that I ripped down the house and don't increase any flow. So basically, we made the lot size from ten thousand square feet to over twenty-one thousand. Um, it's a fairly new house, fairly brand-new septic system. It has a well. Uh, and like I said, it, it's about twenty-one thousand plus of property, and it's, it's a three, it, it's got a restrictive deed of a three-bedroom. It can be no bigger. So I just wanted to lift the seasonal off and, and just have it as a year-round.
Okay, uh, I, I am gonna comment. In addition to the board, uh, I did forget to include, in addition to them not having any objection to removing the deed restriction, um, if we were to approve this, uh, Mr. Vermette, you, you need, you do, uh, you also do need to go before the Board of Health, have a Title V inspection done, uh, and at that point, the Board of Health would have to remove their seasonal deed restriction, um, as well, because both boards, boards have it on there, so. Um, my, my only comment at this point, then I'll open it up for questions, is I, I, you know, the the seasonal deed restrictions, um, I, I, I think those probably more appropriately belong with the Board of Health anyways. Um, those are usually on there because of septic issues, um, and capacity, so, uh, you know, if the Board of Health is in favor of it, I, 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 I'm, I'm in favor of it, but keeping in mind, we want to make sure that, uh, if we were to allow this, we'd want to condition it that, uh, Board of Health, um, removes theirs as well, so.
Okay.
Questions?
And I just had a Title V done. It, it passed everything, so.
Okay.
Just had that recently done.
Good. Uh, questions from the Board of the petitioner? Board members? Anyone? Chris?
I think we just read in to the record, um, what our definition of seasonal summer residence. It says a dwelling with a substandard septic design not meeting minimum Title V requirements for a year-round residence. So if he has a new septic system, he doesn't qualify that for that definition anymore, so I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, agreed. I, I, I think sometimes we, some of these things that we'll put on, uh, you know, kind of going back to our last meeting, sometimes we board historically put restrictions on things that maybe, maybe weren't under review, so, um, I, I, we're, we're gonna attempt to clean that up over the course of time here. Uh, any other board members have questions, comments? Anyone, uh, from the public, any butters have comments, questions? Anyone on Facebook, Lake Cam?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion from, uh, a board member. If, if, if someone is so inclined to, how about this? I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what the motion is. I'll entertain. Uh, if, if anyone's willing to entertain removing the seasonal, uh, deed restriction, uh, contingent upon the Board of Health also, um, removing their, um, their deed restriction.
I do.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Youngquist.
I'll second, Noble.
Chris, I mean, Jerry's gonna second. Any further discussion?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I, I I think the Board of Health did remove it on some of the paperwork that I gave you.
Um, you know what? I'm, I'm going by a, a memo, excuse me, a, a, I guess it's an email memo from the Board of Health agent, um, that was, uh, sent out today. Um, so I, I, I kind of, I kind of refer to the latest information. Now, having said that, Louis, if, if if they've removed it, then the conditions already met, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't interfere with, uh, with, with ours, our, uh, removing the, the, the restriction as well.
I'm, I'm just looking at this twelve-nine oh-nine document, and and, and this is my fault. I, it, it said basically right on it that I should have came back to the ZBA to lift it, and ever that lad didn't read the whole paper. But, um, it looks like they approved it to me. Uh, do you guys have that in front of you?
Uh, you know what?
It's, uh, it was a December nine, two thousand and nine meeting with the Board of Health.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Nora.
Our, if it was approved in two thousand and nine, would that still be in effect? That two-year limitation doesn't, uh, stand on this?
Uh, you'll have to, I, I'm not quite getting your question. You say what two-year limitation?
There's a two-year limitation, um, for a special permit, uh, where it's only valid for two years. Now, maybe the, removing the deed restriction would not be considered a special permit.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's, it, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's the deed restriction, I believe, is a variance, so.
Okay, just a question.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
How about I revise that, um, motion, and we just say, remove the deed restriction pending to Board of Health sign off? He said he wanted to do a final, uh, inspection anyway, so let them sign off and we'll be done.
That, that, that would work. Uh, Jeff, you good with revising it?
I'm fine.
Okay. So Jeff revised the motion to approve, uh, the variance to remove the deed restriction, uh, pending Board of Health sign off, and Jerry, you seconded it. Are you good with seconding it that way?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Aye.
Nora Klein?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yay.
And I'm voting in favor as well. The motion carries. Kathy?
The ZBA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks, and there is, and then it is submitted to the town clerk. There's a twenty-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the tur, the clerk will sign it. You take the decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded, and then have the receipt, oh, take the receipt to the building department if you need a permit, but I don't think you need a permit for that, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, good luck.
Yep.
Okay. Next. All right, so let me just make sure. Okay, the next hearing, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapters forty-eight as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven PM, to hear the petition of Chris Chapin. Special permit under six point one point three and seven point four is requested to increase the living space on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located on a non-conforming lot by enclosing an existing deck and converting it to a family room. The property site is Forty-One Clark Road and is owned by the.
Nai Lion.
Nai Lion Inc. Thank you. So, um, let's see. Who is presenting for the petitioner? Is it, uh?
I'll be myself, Chris Chapin.
Okay. All right, Chris, why don't you tell us, uh, what you're doing, and then I'll read a couple of things into the record.
Yep, I purchased a pre-existing two-bedroom home, uh, uh, back this past fall. Uh, there's a, it's a smaller, uh, home. I had some smaller bedrooms and so, so I'm just looking to expand the space. Uh, there's a pre-existing deck that is in place. It's been there since, I believe, probably that the home has been there, to be honest. Uh, so I'm just looking to enclose that, to add that to the square footage of the property. Um, currently, the property is seven hundred and ninety-four square feet. This would be adding a hundred and eighty square feet, um, which would basically take us from our fourteen point two percent lot coverage up to seventeen point four percent. Um, not encroaching any further into setbacks or anything along those lines, just really looking to add some living space.
Okay, uh, let's see, we have a comment from the memo dated January thirteenth from the Conservation Commission. Uh, Pilgrim Road, no hearing is scheduled. Proposed construction in areas adjacent to wetland will require a request for determination of applicability at a minimum, so if this does get approved and depending on the location, you may have to go see them.
Were you referring to Pilgrim Road? Or just?
Oh, sorry, my, my mistake. Out of order on, on the list, Clark Road, no hearing scheduled. There are no wetland concerns at this location, and no action is required. You are correct. My apologies. That was. And let's see, we also have a letter from the Planning Board dated January fifteenth, or a memo, I should say, at their Thursday, January fourteenth. Meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition, and in regards to the Board of Health, I believe. I believe the Board of Health has no comments. Correct? Kathy? I don't see any, so. I'm not missing anything, right, Kathy? They don't have any comment?
I'm checking right now, John.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Clark Road?
Yes.
It's on the agenda tomorrow for an upgrade to the system.
Okay, so if we were to move forward, we'd probably have a condition, um, that you'd need to be approved by the Board of Health as well. Okay. Comments from, uh, my fellow board members? Jeff, any comments?
What are we, uh, are we in Pilgrim or Clerk?
We're on Clerk. I, I made a mistake. I read Pilgrim off of the Conservation, but we are on Clerk.
I had Pilgrim, okay.
We will be ready for the next one.
It's very simple. Not drastically different.
This is, this is just adding and closing the existing deck?
Correct, correct. Yeah, they're just enclosing it to, to make a little more interior room, it appears.
Yeah.
Any questions? You good with that?
I just, every, what happens, they turn into bedrooms.
Well, these aren't, there will only be two bedrooms.
Okay.
Just modify the, the floor plan so that we've ex, made the bedrooms in the existing space much bigger.
Okay.
Uh, Chris Carmichael, I thought I saw you nod. No, you didn't have any questions, right? Okay. Jerry?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Nora?
No questions, thank you.
Chris Sheedy?
No questions, John, thank you.
Chris Carmichael, Chris Campo?
No questions, thank you.
All we need is one more Chris on this board. Really confused me.
Just to mess with you, John.
Yeah, get in line and no cutting. Um, yeah, I, I, I heard the comment about potentially the bedroom, but again, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll leave that in the purview of the Board of Health. I mean, the bedroom, bedrooms is a component of, of septic, so, um, he's gonna, Chris, uh, is gonna have to go before the Board of Health anyways for their approval, so. Any comments or questions from, uh, public or anyone else on the call, and I'll ask, uh, Lake Cam if we have any comments coming in through Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay. Well, would anyone like to make a motion to approve or deny, and if we would approve, possibly contingent upon, uh, approval of the Board of Health as well?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to?
Uh, petition as submitted with the sign, final sign-ups by Building and Health.
Do we have a second?
Noble will second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Hearing none. The roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And I also vote in favor, so the motion carries, and Kathy, one of these days, I'll put it to memory, but we enjoy hearing you talk so much.
Uh, the ZBA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks. It's submitted to the town clerk, and there's a twenty-day appeal period. If there are no, or if there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it, and you take the decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded, and then take the receipt to the building department when you go for your permit.
Okay, good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, and the final hearing. I can get bottom here. All right, Jeff, now we're going to Pilgrim. Now, I'm, I'm
Okay.
I think I'm, I think I'm, uh, wait a minute. I'm confusing myself here. Bear with me. Yeah, we are. Oh, I'm sorry. So I think, Chris, you have both of these properties, correct?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's where you're confusing me. And we just got done with him. So we're now doing pilgrim. All right. Lakeville Board of Appeals, Lakeville zoning board of appeals acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty A as amended will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January nineteenth to hear the petition of Chris Chapin. Special permit under six point one point three and seven point four is requested to increase the area of existing bedroom by ninety square feet on a preexisting nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot. The property site is thirty-one Pilgrim Road. So, let's, why don't you tell us what you're doing with this one, Chris, and then I'll read a couple of items into the record, hopefully the correct ones this time.
No, this is very similar to the other one. I mean, in the way that I'm adding square footage, again, not I'm expanding the footprint in this one, but I am expanding an existing bedroom. I believe you all have a copy potentially of the floor plan in hand where I'm taking the smaller bedroom and basically pushing the wall out, maintaining setback from both the septic system and creating a, you know, a comfortable space between the existing shed slash carport that is in place. And basically just making a bigger bedroom. That's more, I can fit more than a twin bed in it. My daughter does not appreciate that.
I can't blame her. So you're just literally gonna expand that room. You're, you're doing nothing else to for an additional, additional room or anything like that. Got it? So I've already read it into the record incorrectly for the prior hearing, but I'll read it incorrectly this time. Conservation on the January thirteenth memo stated thirty, thirty-one Pilgrim Road, no hearing scheduled. Proposed construction in areas adjacent to wetland will require a request for determination of applicability at a minimum. So in this one, you may have to go see ConCon, but we'll leave that up to ConCon. And the Planning Board on their January, memo dated January fifteenth, at their Thursday, January fourteenth meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition. And Kathy, just to keep me still, I actually have this one. So the Board of Health, thirty-one Pilgrim, has a new system with a deed restriction for two bedrooms. They have no issue with this petition. So Board of Health is fine with this one. Comments, questions from the, from Board members? Chris is telling me no. Chris Carmichael, Nora is telling me no.
No.
Chris Sheedy with a no. I think Jerry wants, Jeff, Jerry's going with a no. Jeff's no. Campo's, everyone's nodding no. So any comments from the public? Questions? The butters?
No comments from Facebook.
All right. Anyone want to attempt the motion on their own here, other than Mr. Carmichael, myself? Come on, someone. I'm not gonna.
No, Nora.
Not gonna.
Here we go. I am moving that we grant the request to increase the area of an existing bedroom by ninety square feet on a preexisting nonconforming dwelling located on a nonconforming lot at thirty-one Pilgrim Road.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And there are no conditions. Board of Health's already stated they have no issues.
Just, I think the petitioner was asking for ninety-one square feet, not to be terribly exact, but.
Oh, it says in the public hearing by ninety square feet.
Nora, how about we grant the special permit as applied for?
I'm all set for that.
And who was our second? Was that?
That's fine with me.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. Motion passes unanimously. And we're gonna turn Kathy back on.
You already heard it.
I think we're good. Chris, you don't need, you don't need her to repeat the process again, right? Okay. Very good. You're all set. I think that's it for our petitions. I think the only other agenda item we have is approval of some minutes, if I'm correct here, if I can get to that page. And yes, we have minutes from our December fifteenth meeting. If anyone wants to make a motion to approve, we've reviewed them.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December fifteenth meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'd second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Oh, you guys all moved around. I mean, I try to keep this in order, see if I can go by memory. Jeff?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Jerry?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't present for the meeting.
You weren't. Okay, so Campo?
Aye.
Chris Sheedy?
Aye.
And I am in favor as well. So the motion carries. Any other business to come before this board tonight? Kathy, did we miss anything?
So, I think you're good.
Excellent. Well, now I can go work on math homework with my daughter. So having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll give that one to Nora and then Jeff, you seconded it.
Yes.
Yes, so we gotta do the roll call thing. We'll go through it quickly. Ready? Jeff?
Aye.
Chris Carmichael?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yay.
Nora?
Aye.
Chris Sheedy?
Aye.
Chris Campo?
Aye.
And I am in favor as well. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good one.
Bye, everybody.